that we're recommending for the 1978 city charter. My name's Tom McGee and I'm the chair of the committee. I want to thank the members for being here. I want to thank all of you for showing interest in the work that's been going on over the last probably seven or eight months with the work on the committee. I want to thank the committee for all the work they've done. We've got Steve McGoldrick and Jim Tarr here from the consulting team that's helped us work through these questions and through the charter and some of the recommendations that we're making. So what we're going to be doing is we're going to start with the public comment, but I'm going to give you a little bit of the background first and a little bit of parameters on the meeting tonight and the comments that we're looking to hear from all of you as well as people that are on Zoom. The committee was established last May pursuant to the charter. The committee consists of five appointees of the city council and four members appointed by the mayor. The members of the committee are myself, Joe Scanlon, who's the vice chair, Magnolia Contreras, Pam Edwards, Nilson Fresco, James Lamanna, Nicole McLean, CJ Mahose, and Danyé Smith. And again, they've all been really a big part in their participation and their effort to work on this and take a serious look at some of the recommendations that we're making. Again, I want to thank them for all the work they've done and their commitment to getting this moved forward and getting it on to the council, which is the next step. It's important to note that this is a 10-year review of the existing charter. The committee was not charged with making sweeping changes for Lynn's city government. The mission was to modernize language and to make Lynn's governance more effective and efficient. To this end, the committee has met in public session six times. Our plan is to meet one more time after this hearing to complete our work and then send the recommendations along to the city council and then ultimately to the mayor. Once the city council and the mayor have finalized the recommendations, there'll be a public hearing as well in front of the city council, which will give the opportunity to the public to weigh in as well in a future public hearing, public meeting. But once the council and the mayor finalize those recommendations for modifications to the charter, it will be sent to the state legislature and ultimately it'll be, if passed by the legislature, which typically happens in a home rule petition, which is what this will be, get to the governor's desk for her signature. I'm going to briefly touch upon some of the recommendations that the committee has chosen to move forward. There's a handout as well describing these changes. I'll make that available to everyone that's here as well. City council will continue to appoint a city clerk, but will no longer appoint any other city officials, although it will retain confirmation authority over all mayoral appointments. Department heads will no longer serve for indefinite terms. Instead of an expensive special elections, vacancies on the school committee would be filled by the remaining members of the school committee by selecting the candidate who received at least 20% of the ballots cast for that office. If there is no person to fill the vacancy, the seat would be filled by a joint convention of the city council and the school committee. A very significant reform that the city is that the city would no longer be required to seek state approval for reorganization of the city government. Those decisions, as is done in other communities, pretty much most other communities, is done locally, both with the mayor and the council. But Lynn is pretty unique based on legislation that was passed in the 80s that required Lynn to, any changes to city government had to be a home rule petition and approved by the legislature, which again is not done in other communities. The budget process would become more streamlined. The mayor would be required to prepare a five-year capital improvement program that would need approval by the city council. And the mayor or the members of the city council or school committee would not be allowed to hold any other paid position with the city until one year after their service ends rather than the current two-year wait period. So those are pretty much, I think, lay out some of the major pieces of this. A lot of it is to make this document much more both efficient, readable, and understood by the public at large. It's going to be downsized and upgraded and really modernized. So I think that as well is really a big accomplishment for moving this project forwards. So with that, I'm going to start with, there were two public comments that I have that were sent in that I'm going to read, and then I'm going to open the floor for public comment. I'd like to ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. We'll have a timer on that. We are not going to be responding directly to your comments, but we'll take all of your comments under advisement. So this is here for public comment to hear what people have to say. Hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at the charter, the recommendations. It's been on online for over 21 days. We've looked, we've really worked to get input on this and hopefully you've had a chance to, tonight's the chance to weigh in and in front of the committee and make some of your comments on recommendations. And again, there's going to be ample opportunity. I want to, I think this is important, to make additional comments, particularly when this charter is under discussion with the city council, and they will be holding their public hearing based on the recommendations that we submit once we finalize the document. With that, I'm going to read the two public comments received, and then we'll go to those here that would like to come up and comment on the recommendations. This is the first comment. "The mayor should be able to get rid of any department head that is not doing their job. One of the biggest problems in city hall is employees knowing that they are untouchable, so there is not incentive for them to do their job." A second comment received online. "I had one quick question about section 210, filling of vacancies. I understand the 20% threshold a candidate must be eligible to fill a seat. What is confusing to me is for purpose of this section, the 20% minimum threshold shall be calculated as a ratio of ballots cast for the particular office being vacated to votes obtained by the defeated candidate. How do we determine a ratio of ballots cast for that particular office? Do we add up the votes that all the candidates received, or how many votes actually pulled a ballot for the race? In my race, candidates received 24,804 votes total. This would mean 49, 60 votes would be required. The top vote getter only received 4,362." Again, those are public comments. We're not responding on those comments, but we want to hear from what people have to say. Allow the committee to hear those comments. With that, we'll go into the public comment and ask those that are here would like to comment. Raise your hands and we'll bring you up.
I'll go first.
Come on up.
Okay. Hi, my name is Gina O'Toole. I live on 38 Dagle Road in Lynn. And first, I'd like to thank everybody for putting in your time and looking over the charter to make, you know, changes. Of course, change is sometimes not a bad thing. But the process of the change is what I have a problem with. I'm not a big fan of the home rule petition in any way, shape, or form. Only recently, I've learned that this takes the process of the people of the cities' right to have a decision, and it should be on the ballot. Like I said, I really appreciate you taking the time to make the changes, but changing a city charter is changing the way the governance of the city works. And it takes away, a lot of the times, home rule petitions, it does. It takes away everybody's individual voice and everybody's individual right to have a vote on the changes that need to be changed. And sometimes changing something that's done through a home rule petition is impossible. I just witnessed this happen in Lawrence. People's rights in the city of Lawrence were stripped from them during a home rule petition that was done during informal session. 20 to 30 people came up and spoke during city council meetings, all and against the home rule petition. Their voices were ignored. Over 100 to 200 emails were sent once it went to the state house. Those voices were ignored. Passed in the House, went to the Senate, another 200, 300 voices were ignored in the Senate because nobody wanted to interfere with anybody's home rule petition. So a handful of elected officials in Lawrence changed the makeup of how their school committee is elected through a home rule petition. And again, I thank everybody on the committee for your time. I appreciate everything that you've done, but I ask that the committee not do any of these changes to our charter through a home rule petition, and that you go through the ballot this coming year in November. We have an election coming, so it wouldn't need a special election, and every change could be placed on the ballot as a ballot question. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Welcome.
Welcome. Joanne Linder, 302 Lynwood Street, Lynn. I agree with everything Ms. O'Toole said about the home rule petition. And I actually, I don't know, I thought I saw on the agenda there was going to be more of a presentation. So a lot of my questions, I actually went through the whole damn thing. And like, under section 56, will the whole city be audited? Like each department? Like what exactly, there's no definition of what the audit would include. I didn't write down the section on this one, but when it comes to, oh, trying to get on the ballot, you're actually lowering the number of signatures required. The city is growing. Why wouldn't you be looking for more participation from the public? I guess that's the way I'd put that one. Oh, citizens initiative, but I think you're calling it something else now. But anyways, on that, I don't know if it was a law before, but now you need 10 affidavits from citizens before you can do an initiative. Is that a state law or whatever? You know, see, I thought there was going to be a little bit more of a presentation that I was sort of hoping that my questions would have been answered without me coming up here. And then the other one would be, you're eliminating the annual report. I wonder why that is. And I agree, it should go before the voters, not before the state legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to follow up on questions, we're absolutely open to having those questions submitted either in writing. So tonight is the public meeting, but we're also looking to continue this process. Our final meeting is coming up, but we were still looking for input. If there are questions you want to put in writing, please do that.
I sure will, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. Next, someone else would like to? I see someone else raise your hand. You can go up next. Welcome and state your name and let us know where you're from.
My name is John Michael Fana. I live at 32 Merrill Ave. Several recommendations here. And I also understand, I want to add that I understand that this in some ways had a limited capacity, so maybe this is also discussion points for the future. One is adopting a public comment requirement for council meetings as well, which currently doesn't exist. Everybody exists in other places. Another is improving the initiative referendum turnout threshold. I saw it's 20% currently in there, acknowledging that Lynn is a low voter turnout city, perhaps also having a super majority caveat in there that would allow another way for Linners to still get something passed even if the turnout was a little lower. And then there's a strong support for that item. Third would be strengthening council oversight with a periodic mayor's questions time, perhaps following the state of the city address. There could be perhaps an annual item. There are stipulations in the charter that allow the council to call the mayor and ask questions, but this would institute some kind of regular occurrence for that type of forum. Another would be looking at the annual audit, potentially looking at having that be an audit committee of some kind that would allow a long-term, ongoing work on that particular front, ensuring the city is staying up to date and everything is good as it occurs on the books. Fifth would be electronic access and open data requirements. The city produces a lot of data, and publishing that data would help, I think, with transparency. That might be a deeper administrative look, but I think that's something that would help with community outreach. Also, a youth engagement aspect to some kind of element of the city council, possibly with the school committee, having a liaison from the schools or from the student governments that represents the students or gives them an avenue directly to their public officials, I think would benefit youth engagement politically. And my last recommendation is taking a look at expanding the scope of the citizen advisory board, which currently mostly advises as it relates to community development, but I think that could be looked at as a much more broader advisory board to the government at large. And those are my comments, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your participation. I saw someone in the back there, Anne Race. Welcome. Good evening.
Buenas noches a todos.
Good evening, everyone.
Mi nombre es Altamira Luisa Ferreira.
My name is Altamira Luisa Ferreira.
Y yo entendo que es necesario que la ciudad haga más para asegurarse de que el ayuntamiento y el gobierno de la ciudad estén más abiertos a la comunidad.
I understand that the city needs to do more to make sure that the city hall and the city government are more open to the community.
Asegurarse de que haya interpretación disponible a todas las oficinas, eventos, reuniones, y todas las comunicaciones. Y avisos sobre reuniones deben realizarse al menos en dos idiomas principales.
Making sure that interpretation is available at all offices, events, meetings, and all communications and meeting notice should be done in at least the two primary languages.
Debería hacer un requisito con un plan real de interpretación, traducción, para que las personas puedan participar y ser parte del gobierno de la ciudad sin importar el idioma que hablen.
There should be a national interpretation and translation plan so that people can participate and be part of the city government no matter what language they speak.
Yo creo que la interpretación en varios idiomas debería
the city budget and constitution since our city is very linguistically diverse.
Por ejemplo, mi primera lengua es portugués, pero hoy estoy hablando en mi segunda lengua, el español, porque sé que sería imposible tener alguien que estaría aquí esta noche para interpretar en mi idioma.
For example, my first language is Portuguese, but today I'm speaking my second language, Spanish, because I know it will be impossible to have someone who speaks my language to interpret from me tonight.
Yo quiero participar y ser parte de las actividades de la comunidad, pero muchas veces no me atrevo por temer y no poder entender lo que está pasando, porque no está en mi idioma. Y como yo, hay miles de personas en la comunidad que no participan por la misma razón.
I want to participate and be part of the city activities, but many times I don't dare for fear of not being able to understand what is going on, because it is not in my language. And like me, there are thousands of people out there in the community who do not participate for the same reason. Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and for those comments. Thank you. Someone else like to make some public comment? I know we do have some people online as well, and I want to let the people that are online know that we are, we will be going to those comments once we get a chance to hear the comments from the public here in the council chamber.
Hi.
Welcome.
Hello, my name's Charlie Clark. I live on 487 Eastern Avenue. Couple of comments mostly echoing what others have said. I think we have an opportunity with this charter review to ensure that public comment is guaranteed at city council meetings. To me, this seems like an essential part of any democracy, and the city school committee has been doing this for some time with, I think, great success. Yeah, to echo what the previous speaker said, any city event with public comment, at the very least, should have guaranteed language access and translation. In a city with as large a Spanish-speaking population as Lynn, that Spanish translation should be by default and not need individuals to go through the process of requesting it from the translation department. Not all of the citizens knows about that or knows how to go through the process, or just an average working person have the time to do that. Today, our group, Neighbor to Neighbor, we brought our own translation, as did Lynn United for Change, and individual citizens just don't have that resource. And if we're honest about being like a democratic city, it needs to be guaranteed. Finally, I think it's a really good thing that this charter, the changes in the charter would allow the mayor to remove ineffective department heads and clean out some folks who just have been sitting in those jobs for too long. I do think, though, the hiring process needs to become more transparent and provide the city council with more information earlier in the process to allow them to engage in their role and confirmations with actual effect and not just a rubber stamp on decisions that are already so fully in motion. And actually, just one more thing. In general, I think the changes in this charter do represent a consolidation of power around the mayor and shifting of that balance from the city council. I think checks and balances are one of the great aspects of our democracy, and I worry about a time in the future. We are very lucky right now to have a very competent mayor. As we see nationally, it's very possible that people are elected who are, in my opinion, both incompetent and immoral, and I fear a time when we've expanded the powers of the mayor with less oversight, we have a mayor who just does not represent the interests of the city. So I would like that to be considered. And actually, finally, I know the purview of this charter review was limited to modernization and administrative processes, but I would ask you to consider opening the door for either a conversation in this charter review or in sometime sooner than the next 10 years about ways we could change perhaps the electoral process in Lynn to engage voter turnout. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.[890.07][890.07](APPLAUSE). Is there anyone else that would like to come up and comment? Someone that has not already commented?
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Gordy Jean-François from 71 Michigan Ave. I'm here today, first, to say thank you guys for your time. But the first thing that I have to say is I'm also a little bit disappointed due to the fact that I've seen all of members of the committees are either politicians or insiders. That is wrong. And second of all, regarding the mayors, I'm not saying the current mayor. On Section 2-3, they said all such appointment, the mayor can appoint anyone that he wants. And then one of the words that I disagree with, it said, after that, the mayors simply have to send it to the city council for review. The word "review" should not be there. It should not be upon approval of the city council, two-thirds of the city council, instead of approval or review. Then on Section 2-1, every time they mention mayors, it's only "he." It should be "he slash she," because at some point, we're going to have female mayors in the city of Lynn. The third point that I would like to address also, it's about, and one of the reasons that I think it should be two-thirds of the city council, it's just to prevent nepotism in the city of Lynn. And we all know the cities, it's well-known about nepotism. It's who you know. And I agree with this young man that spoke about this earlier. Transparency is a major problem here in the city of Lynn. So that needs to be addressed. And again, everyone here understands that you guys, it should be a different group of people here. Like, for instance, I don't see any Asian on the committee. I don't see any LGBT, no youth on the committee. So that's mean their issue will not be addressed. Anything that they disagree with the current charter will not be addressed, because if you're not around the table while decision is taken on your behalf, definitely your issue will not be addressed. I'm hoping you guys will take our comment in consideration, because usually, when the city council is making, when people come in front of the podium and say something, then nothing has been done. It's time for change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.[1074.83][1074.83](APPLAUSE). Someone else would like to comment? Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Gabe Cohen-Glynnick. I'm an organizer of a neighbor, community-based organization here in Lynn. Would just like to echo the comments that have been said so far by a lot of folks, particularly in regard to establishing a public comment, a required public comment period for city council meetings. I was recently at a school committee meeting for the first time, and it was really meaningful to see people actually have the space to voice their concerns on a regular basis. It opened it up a lot more to the voice of the community, and I think would like to see that established in the charter for the council. Yeah, and I agree with a lot of the other points made, so I won't repeat too many of them, but I think that the right to translation feels really important. We have to do it by request right now, and to ensure, at least for places where there's public hearing, where there's expected to be public comment, that there is insured translation, at least for Spanish speakers. So many of the groups, folks in our group and other groups that we work with speak Spanish and deserve to not have to request to be able to be understood when they come here. And we really appreciate that there has been the establishment of a translation department, and Berta, who's been amazing, but to really solidify that as part of the way that the city operates feels really, really important. And the last thing I'll just say is, I really liked the idea that I just heard from John Fana about bringing the youth more in. I know Councilor McLean established the youth task force, but to make that more concretely ingrained in the charter and speak about the role of youth, we've been working with a team of youth from Lynn Public High Schools, and they are incredible, and they should have a voice in the city and to enshrine that in the charter feels really critical. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.[1198.83][1198.83](APPLAUSE). Would anyone else like to come forward and make a comment? Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. I'm just going to start the stopwatch so I don't go on too long. Appreciate the time. Isaac Simon Hodes, and I have some comments on behalf of Lynn United for Change first. So first, there are a couple proposals that we've heard made that we'd like to support. First, the public comment period before city council meetings, that's been suggested, seems like a positive option to us, so we'd like to see that implemented. We've also heard discussion about adding language to a preamble to explicitly recognize the importance and value of Lynn's diversity. And I would add, history as a working-class city, and we'd also see value in that. And more generally, there was some discussion about the need for additional language to increase the transparency and ability of residents to participate in the selection of department heads, and we also see value in that, recognizing how important the role those positions play in the day-to-day functioning of city hall. Beyond that, a couple of suggestions that have come forward from members of our group in that the organization as a whole supports. One would be finding a way to create additional advance notice for hearings and events that currently require public notice, but it's not always sufficient to get the word out to people who, you know, are busy with multiple jobs, with kids, et cetera. We also note that the current charter requires that rules and regulations adopted by agencies and departments be provided to the clerk and available for public examination there. We'd recommend that that be required to be posted on the website as well, as being much more accessible. And the same for city ordinances, that they shouldn't just be at the clerk's office, but it would be great to require those to be searchable on the city website. Finally, and probably very importantly to our group, is the issue that was mentioned earlier about language access and language justice. We would really like to see something in the charter that requires the creation and maybe periodic reexamination of a language justice policy for the city to ensure that there are sufficient resources for interpretation and translation, that those are available and that proactive steps are taken to make sure the general public and visitors to city hall are aware and able to access those resources, and that all city hall staff are required to receive training on the importance of language access and how to use those tools. We know people are busy and they need the support. And just very quickly, I'd add two quick examples of why that's so important to us. Just last month, before the new year, we had someone come into city hall with a very serious public health issue around potential lead poisoning of a young child, and she took time from work, ran, and then called us on the way out, that she had been told, sorry, we don't have anyone here who speaks Spanish, and was just sort of sent away. And we know efforts have been made, we appreciate that, by the current administration to have interpretation, but we're not there, and we feel like we really need a proactive plan spelled out to make those things happen. So, thank you. I think my time's up.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.[1453.61][1453.61](APPLAUSE). Other comment? Other comments?
First, I want to apologize for being late, because I thought I could access it on Zoom and attempted to, and then I couldn't, so I flew over here as quickly as I could.
I think we're, I'm pretty sure we're on Zoom, but I apologize for that mix.
No, it's not you, trust me, it's me. Definitely me.
I have my own issues with Zoom as well, so I understand.
My name's Gina Cordy. I'm the lead pastor for Lynn Church of the Nazarene. I am standing because I feel personally that this is one of the most progressive administrations that I've been a part of, and that it's pretty open and very transparent. So I want to thank you all for that, first of all. Certainly, there are things that need to change and improve, but that's why we're all here, to have these conversations. I certainly support that there, we need to have more language capability for the different languages that exist in this city. But again, it's a collaborative effort, so I want to thank the administration for the work that's being done and really trying to corral everyone together, because that's what community is, and that's what we are, whether we're churches, the local government, the state government. It calls for all of us, so I wanted to say thank you for what you are trying to do, and it will take all of us to bring it together. And I am very hopeful for the direction that we have been going, and I believe in faith we'll continue to go collectively.
Thank you for your comments.[1549.41][1549.41](APPLAUSE). And thank you for getting here instead of having to depend on Zoom. Thank you. Other comments from those that are here? If not, I think we're going to go to the, we're ready, Danya, we're ready to go to some questions or comments online? So Danya has just explained online that we're accepting comments, and please raise your hands if you want to make comments for tonight's meeting. I see one, I see one comment says, I'm here to listen only. I don't know if there's, again, if you're online, would be happy to hear some of your comments. And again, I think there's been a lot of talk, that's why we're having the public meeting tonight. All of our meetings were public. We really want to get input back. I know we're getting input today. We had a 21-day online ability to weigh in with questions or comments or recommendations. Anybody that's here today, and I said it earlier, if you have questions that you want to put together and then submit to us, we still want to receive those comments. And if you are online and you want to send either an email off or information off to us in that form for comment, we're happy to take that as well. Again, this has been a really effort to make this an open process, looking at the document and making some changes. And I just want to make one comment related to some of the questions or comments we've heard tonight. We are really making, there are not major changes that we're looking to make based on what we're presenting to the city council. Again, and we're going to continue to make comment, there will be a chance to have, again, a public hearing with the council and have your voices heard at that point as well. We will take into account all of the information we received as we go to our next meeting, and I know the members will be willing to discuss all of those comments and questions and recommendations as we look to finalize this charter in the process here. So I want to thank everyone for being here, I appreciate all of your comments. And like I said, more importantly, there is still an opportunity to reach out to us and with questions, concerns, comments, and recommendations, so that as we look at the final product, we're able to take into account all of that input and hopefully make it a product that everyone is... or comments or recommendations. Anybody that's here today, and I said it earlier, if you have questions that you want to put together and then submit to us, we still want to receive those comments. And if you are online and you want to send either an email off or information off to us in that form for comment, we're happy to take that as well. Again, this has been a really effort to make this an open process, looking at the document and making some changes. And I just want to make one comment related to some of the questions or comments we've heard tonight. We are really making, there are not major changes that we're looking to make based on what we're presenting to the city council. Again, and we're going to continue to make comment. There will be a chance to have, again, a public hearing with the council and have your voices heard at that point as well. We will take into account all of the information we received as we go to our next meeting. And I know the members will be willing to discuss all of those comments and questions and recommendations as we look to finalize this charter in the process here. So I want to thank everyone for being here. I appreciate all of your comments. And like I said, more importantly, there is still an opportunity to reach out to us and with questions, concerns, comments, and recommendations so that as we look at the final product, we're able to take into account all of that input and hopefully make it a product that everyone feels good about, the final product that we do release. And I know the committee has worked hard to include thoughts and input from a broad range of people. So I appreciate that. Is there a, we have someone that would like to comment?
We have a raised hand from Yvonne.
Yvonne, you're on.
Hello. My name is Yvonne Casalu. I'm living in Tudor Street. So I have a question, and I want to know about the cleaning of the city when there's no emergency. I'm a dog owner, so I have to walk my dog every morning and also at night. And I realize that every single time when there's no emergency since 2021, so many houses doesn't clean their road. So I have a few accidents, and I hit my bag, I hit my head many times filling the snow. Because I really want to know if it's any kind of policy on the city that they could take it to the houses that doesn't clean. They can pass weeks without cleaning the street. I'm really concerned about that.
Yvonne, if I could just, the comment period tonight and the meeting itself is for the charter review work that this committee has done, and it's specifically related to that. You definitely have some questions and concerns related to issues that are outside the purview of this committee and the work that we're doing.
I'm trying to join, but I don't have the charter. I don't have the figure out. Only thing I want to opinion about that, and I want to put my questions there. So anyways, thank you so much.
No, I appreciate it. And I would say you can reach out to your counselors and to your counselor and to the mayor's office on some of those questions related to that. But again, the focus on tonight's meeting is on the charter review and the work that we've done. But thank you for listening in, and thank you for your comments. I don't see anyone else raising their hand. And I know you wanted to make one final comment at this point. If no one else wants to make a comment, then you can come up next. I'm happy to, if you make a final comment on...
Thank you. I appreciate it. This has to do with what happened in 2018. You eliminated indebtedness. There's no clause for that. So like this year, the city borrowed $124 million. You had public hearings, but that was it. I think there should be some sort of a threshold, not a blank check, for the city to borrow money without consulting the taxpayers. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Felton. I live at 11 West Green Street. I got here a little late, so I'm sorry for my lateness. But I have a question. Within the new charter, a proposal to charter, could they put in there that when they are selecting for new positions within the city, could they have a community meeting about who they're going to put in and what position are they applying for within the city instead of just ordinary appointing them? I know the mayor made a recommendation to the city council, and the city council would do their investigation. But could the city be, could the citizens be involved in that process of selecting for any position within the city? That would we be truly aware of what's going on and who are being put in different positions within the city? Be part of the proposal for the...
Thank you for the comment and the recommendation. Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Come forward. Welcome.
Thanks very much. My name is Charlie Gallo. Here in my individual capacity as a Lynn resident, the work of drafting charter and governance documents and policy documents can be tedious at times. And so I just want to congratulate this group for taking on that hard and tedious work. I'm going to keep my comments big picture because I think charters are big-picture documents. They're broad. They provide procedures, oversight, administrative rules. There are a number of good suggestions here tonight. I think the art is going to be deciding which ones belong in the charter and which ones may live elsewhere. And so I want to echo the thanks also about the transparency in this process, so many opportunities to participate, including online, in person. You had open meetings and a good mix of, you know, folks from the community and expertise from the Collins Center. And so I just wanted to give congratulations to the group on that and voice support for a broad charter as we have here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Unless anyone else would like to make a comment, I think, please come forward. We're here to listen.
Hi, how y'all doing today? I'm Anthony Alexander. Mine is about the, I'm in a sober house out here. Instead of having like some of the, I mean halfway house, some of the people in it, the rent is so high that people can't even get their own places, just try to start their life over new. You see what I'm saying? And they still stuck and stagnated in the same situation that they're trying to get out of. So instead of just having these, you know, I know they're building a lot of stuff for other people from other countries, but like they said in the Bible, charity begins at home and spreads abroad. We need help just as well as everybody else need help. And I heard y'all talking about the language barrier. Just like, you know, well, we can learn something that we both can, where they can learn some English, and we can learn some Spanish. So that way, we can learn to negotiate with each other, to know what's going on because people own businesses, and we don't even know what they're saying because they say they speak no English. I don't speak no Spanish. You know what I mean? So it'd be best for the community, for both parties to come, so they can benefit and we can benefit as well. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Again, seeing no other comments, I think we look for a motion to adjourn. So moved? Is there a second?
Mayor?
Yes.
Do we have a date for the next meeting, Mr.?
Oh, yes. Yes, Danya.
Yeah. It was set next meeting date.
Yes. Yes. Thank you very much. Working with the Collins Center, what would we look on a timeline? And prior to journeying here, let's try and come to a date that works. Some suggestions?
I'd like to get another meeting in before the end of the month. Maybe the third week in January?
No.
No?
January the 15th, that's next week.
I was looking at the 23rd.
23rd is...
Okay, the 27th, 23rd?
I can make the 23rd.
23rd?
Yep. Yes.
23rd. Going, going.
It's going to be in room 302?
Sorry?
That doesn't...
Oh, it doesn't work for the chairman.
Well, I can make the 23rd.
What time, Mr. Chairman? Do we?
What time would work?
4 o'clock.
4 o'clock?
Yeah.
Does that work for everyone?
Yep.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
23rd, 4 o'clock.
Later time?
I will have to just make it work. I have commitment already. We'll figure it out.
Is that work? Are we ready to go on the 23rd? Or...
No, no, no. Don't worry.
All right. Let's say the 23rd at 4 o'clock.
Yep.
So open for a motion. We've got a motion on the floor, a motion to adjourn. Is a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The meetings are recorded.
Wait.
I like language.
No, it...
At this point, it would be a business meeting. Put our next meeting here.
It's not a meeting. Yeah.
Regular meeting. So...
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Again, does 4 o'clock work for the members of the committee?
Yeah, that's fine.
4 o'clock.
He can tell.
Again, that's why we have the public meeting, and we're getting public comment. We've been having our meetings at 4 o'clock. All of the meetings have been at 4 o'clock.
And the meetings are recorded as well.
And working?
I just want to say that the next meeting is not a public hearing. It is just a meeting of the committee to discuss these comments that we're having, that we've heard tonight. It's not open to the public, but it is recorded. And if you want to view that meeting, you can go online on the city website. There is a charter review page, and you can see those, you can view those meetings there.
We have a motion on the table, and a second. And all those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting's adjourned.